Good evening. My name is Sally Allen and I'm a member of the League of Women Voters of the Ann Arbor area. I welcome you to our Zoom meeting featuring candidates for the Washtenaw County Board of Commissioners, District One. The candidates will be on the ballot for the general election on Tuesday, November 3rd. This year, the League of Women Voters is celebrating 100 years of expanding voter rights, educating voters, and shaping and influencing legislation at local, state, and federal levels. We are pleased to sponsor these forums. The League is a nonpartisan civic organization that encourages informed and active participation by all citizens in government. While the League does not support candidates or parties, we do take stance on issues we have studied. One of the League's most important goals is to assist voters in making informed choices at the polls, and thus we bring you tonight's program. I would now like to introduce our moderator, Peter Allen, who will explain the format and get us started. Thank you.
Thank you, Sally. It's my honor to introduce the two candidates running for the Washtenaw County Board of Commissioners, District One, Republican Rod Anderson and Democrat Jason Majewski. Thank you, candidates, for participating in this forum. The forum today will have this format. Each candidate will have an opening statement of up to one minute. Each candidate will have a closing statement of up to 90 seconds. In between, I will ask questions which come from the Washtenaw County community. Each candidate will have two minutes to respond to each question. At appropriate times, a sign on the screen will indicate the time remaining, 30 seconds, and then stop. If you have used up your time, you will be allowed to finish your sentence, and then your microphone will be muted so that the other candidate has an equal opportunity to participate. The candidates will begin speaking in alphabetical order. Depending on the number of questions, all candidates will have an opportunity to be the first or last to answer the question. We're now ready for your opening statement, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Peter. My name is Rod Anderson, and what I hope to do in this one minute is to talk about who I am, why I'm running, and if I have time, what I hope to accomplish. If not, I'll do it in the closing. So my name is Rod Anderson, born in Baltimore, attended Johns Hopkins and University of West Florida for my degree, and during my working life, we moved several places, lived in the South, lived in the West, in California, and I was in the Navy, so I lived on a boat for quite a while. And I have to say, Michigan is the best. Moved here in, gosh, this is fast, moved here in 1990, live in Chelsea, and we really like it. So, government experience is the city council. I was elected in 2007 in quite a serious landslide, as it happens, for two terms. I'm currently Human Rights Commission, on the Human Rights Commission with the City of Chelsea. Now, why am I running? Jason, I'm not after your job. You're doing a good job, but there are some things that we need to talk about at the council. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, Mr. Majewski, may we have your opening statement?
Thank you. My name is Jason Majewski. I'm a Democrat, running for County Commission, District Number One, just finishing my first term and hoping to get re-elected to a second. I live in Dexter Township with my wife Molly and my three kids, Quentin, Riley, and Paxton. I served on the Dexter Township Board for two terms, a total of eight years. I also, through that, served on the Western Washtenaw Recycling Board of Directors for a decade, the last three years of which I was the chairperson. I work professionally for the Senior Alliance, which is a nonprofit area agency on aging. I'm the Chief Advocacy and Planning Officer there, where I work to further programs like Meals on Wheels and programs that serve seniors in their homes. I graduated the University of Michigan at Dearborn, a bachelor's degree in political science, and a master's degree in public administration. If you want more information about my campaign, you can look me up at jasomajewski.com. And I want to thank the League for holding this event tonight, and I look forward to the discussion with Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, candidates. And now to the questions. As a reminder, I will be reading a question once. It will not be repeated unless requested. Let's start with Mr. Majewski. "The world has changed a great deal since most of you decided to run for office: the global pandemic, the ensuing economic collapse, and more recently, the Black Lives Matter movement. These have focused attention on how these matters highlight the disproportionate burden shoulder by the poor, the elderly, and communities of color. These present challenges to government at all levels concerning economic opportunities, affordable housing, safety, and public health." So your first question will relate to the enormity of these challenges. Question one: What do you see as the major impacts these upheavals will have on the agenda of the Washtenaw County Board of Commissioners in the coming two years?
Thank you, Peter, for the question. It's an important question. First and foremost, it's going to have an impact on the county budget. It already has. We've seen substantial increases in expenditures in public health, in managing our health response to COVID-19. I think the county as a whole has been very responsive and attentive to the fact that communities in the eastern part of the county have been severely hit in a disparate proportion to the rest of the county. There's budget impacts overall in other areas as well, when you look at community mental health services and the changes that are going on with people applying for Medicaid because of the loss of employment due to COVID-19. So you had mentioned a lot of things in the preamble to that question. Some of them related to Black Lives Matter and some of the disparities that exist in our community. One of the things that we have done over the past year, and actually before the pandemic, was create an equity office and hire an equity officer at the county to begin to address some of those issues that have occurred. We're really looking, I think we've been quite successful as well in doing some pop-up testing sites throughout Washtenaw County for COVID-19 when events have happened. And I think our public health response overall to the pandemic has been quite good. There's been, I think, a very good dashboard of information that's been put up for the public to learn more about what has been going on during the pandemic. We certainly have a lot of issues coming out of it. There's long-term budget implications. There could be a $7 million budget hole in the upcoming budget that we are going to have to deal with, with a lot of hard decisions while supporting public health. Our first priority is always to balance the county's budget.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson?
Thank you. What a question. I think the current climate can end up being mildly disconcerting to absolutely catastrophic. I live in Chelsea. I live on Washington Street, one of the main arteries, just down from the high school. If you had told me a year ago that I was experiencing a reasonable fear for my safety by living in Chelsea, I would have said you were crazy. But unfortunately, that happened to be the case. Now, you could argue that, you know, maybe that fear wasn't rational, but there were demonstrations taking place that were, you know, bending the law, if not seriously breaking it. So how do we get here? And how do we get away from being here? Now, as I've mentioned before, I grew up in Baltimore, and you may recall the Baltimore riots. And one of the consequences of the Baltimore riots was an agreement with the Department of Justice to essentially relax the policing of the black community. And it results where? What? Good, bad? No, catastrophic. Most, like the rest of us, all of us want to live in peace and quiet, except for a few thugs. And they're white thugs and black thugs. And if you remove the police, guess what? Guess who's in charge? And that's what happened. And frankly, that's what's happening around the country these days, is that the police, basically their hands are tied, and they can't, they can't police, you know, with the way that, I mean, I'm not talking about extreme measures, but the police are powerless when the people they arrest are put back on the streets. Now, what about the county? What can I do with the county? Well, I'm offering my services, limited though they may be, to try to get this communication between left and right. I mean, at least that's a way we can stop, we can start, is that starting that?
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. And we're going to move on to question two. We start with you again, Mr. Anderson. Question number two: Several years ago, Washtenaw County and the City of Ann Arbor launched, quote, "One Community," quote, "Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Initiative." A racial equity officer was hired in mid-2019, but her work has been slowed by the pandemic. What do you think should be her primary focus to accelerate the goals of this initiative?
Boy, these questions are great. I actually met with the equity officer as part of the, she came out and spoke to us, the Human Rights Commission, and I think she's a terrific person, and I think she'll do a good job. And nothing I heard was objectionable, but here's the problem I have, is that are we talking about equal opportunity, or are we talking about equal outcome? The way I read the policy, it's the latter, and frankly, I have a problem with that. I mean, that's what's written on the face of the Supreme Court, equal justice under law. Now, have we always furnished that, especially to our African-American brothers and sisters? No, we haven't. But we're trying. I think we are trying as a nation. So I think one of the key things is that we need to make sure that we don't get away from the principles that our founding fathers put in place. Now, diversity, let's talk about that a minute. Read a book a few months ago that I would highly recommend by a fellow named Rusty Reno. It's called Return of the Strong Gods. And in summary, he says, "We're living in a post-World War II environment." I think he's right, because that changed everything. And one of the things that changed was it got us away from, you know, the nationalistic aspect of a country, because of national socialism, right? So the question is, we'll do away with borders, we'll have open markets, and this is not a left-right thing, because F.A. Hayek was a key proponent of this as well. The thing is, now that we're in that environment, diversity is seen as one of our guiding principles. But I would argue that diversity is not a strong god. Reno's argument is basically, the weak gods will go away, and diversity is weak, and we will have nothing left. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Mr. Majewski, please. Same question.
Thank you, Peter. It's an important topic for us at the county, and we've been fortunate, we've been able to move forward on diversity, equity, and inclusion issues over the past year and a half. For me, the primary focus of the equity officer is going to be, is really multifaceted, but begins with fostering communication between all different aspects of county government and our community as a whole. We've already made the equity officer part of the analysis that we do on items that are coming before the county commission, so we get that perspective included in the sometimes lengthy analyses that we receive on issues. It covers many different parts of county government. You know, I think we might first and foremost think of public health in the current pandemic, and the way that we are approaching how COVID has spread in our community, and how we are addressing that in terms of pop-up sites and communities that we are trying to interact with more, so we can have testing that is available and address hotspots as they happen. The equity officer has been involved with that. It's got a role in law enforcement with the sheriff's office, and how we are conducting policing, how we are operating the county jail, and addressing issues that are occurring there. The Office of Community and Economic Development, many programs that are operated by the county, you know, are important to discuss from an equity standpoint as well. Community mental health is another area where, you know, I try to do some work to bring mental health services, more mental health services out to the western part of the county, and the equity officer is definitely involved in those conversations as well. So it's really important, a part of, I think, having a strong county government and, you know, building that as well on the western part of the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we're going to stick with you for the next question, county budget question. Regardless of the recent state budget allocations, the coronavirus pandemic will cause major upheavals in the budgets of local governments. Considering that important job of the county commissioners is to oversee this budget, what are your priorities, given the likely budget shortfalls?
Yeah, really, really important topic. You know, we had talked earlier in the summer about potentially having a $7 million deficit coming up in the county budget. You know, and for me, I think predominant at the beginning of this is going to be supporting public health in response to the pandemic as we continue into 2021. You know, the next county commission's going to have an important role in helping to continue that response. There's going to be, I think, a long-term testing implication for what is going on in Washtenaw County. It's going to infect employment sites, recreation sites, restaurants, and having public health, a strong public health department in our budget is going to be quite critical. There are other parts of county government that are fundamentally important, community mental health, although that's a separate authority. In the past, we've used general funds to supplement that as well, in ensuring that mental health services are getting out in the community. That's a big thing coming out of the pandemic, is dealing with issues of isolation, you know, students transitioning back to in-school learning, and how we're dealing with the mental health, behavioral health implications of that. So I think the community mental health portion of the budget is going to be very important as well. For me, I'm always concerned as well about parks and recreation. One of the things I'm really interested in is the expansion of the border, border trail, and now motorized transit, transportation services for older adults as well. So I think continuing to support those recreation opportunities that have been used so often this summer is going to be an important thing for me in the next couple of budgets of the county.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Yes, thank you. Well, I have the utmost admiration for our current commissioners for dealing with the budget at the county level. When I was on council, we had a budget that was two orders of magnitude less, and we, I think, massaged it pretty well, but we're dealing with a different, entirely different kind of situation here. So it's, that's what governments do, is make the proper allocation of resources. Now, conditions have changed, so what do we do to respect that? Well, we need to set priorities, and my personal priorities in general are the following. First of all, public safety. Now, this includes, you know, the police, you know, the sheriff's department, so on, courts, et cetera. Absolute number one priority. I am admissible to including some aspects of public health in this for epidemiological reasons. I think that is an element of public safety that is not usually considered under public health, but it would need to be. So that's number one. Number two, social services, child protective services, that sort of things. Number three is public works, infrastructure, you know, the wideband effort, roads, and so on. And finally, general welfare, golf courses, fitness center, and the rest of it. So obviously, in a time of stress on the budget, what you start to look at is the lower ones, the lower priority ones, which is, you know, I'm a big fan of the border-to-border trail, the Dexter-Chelsea Trail. I have one of those electric bikes, and it's terrific for riding on that trail. I like it a lot. But can I realistically say I want to finish that trail when I may need to fund a pop-up testing center somewhere that makes sense? No.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. We're going to go right back to you. Now, we're going to talk about county-wide broadband. In 2018, a comprehensive study regarding broadband access was done by the county. It is no longer a luxury, but in a necessity in light of COVID-19 restrictions, particularly as it affects education, economic development, and property values. In light of the barriers of access, adoption, and affordability across the county, what would you do to hasten county-wide broadband? Please consider your answer in light of your own district.
Thank you. Well, if you look at the statistics, there's 87% of the population in the county has wideband available. So what's the problem? Well, the problem, of course, is out here in the rustic part of the county, that 87% is a lot less, because we're so spread out. Now, frankly, I've looked at the work that Jason and the committee has been doing. I think it's great. The only argument I would make, Jason, and this is semi-serious, is that, you know, there's a lot of art. I would prefer more matter and less art, or at least less art. But it's well done. I appreciate the work you're doing. I think, you know, from my perspective, I am not knowledgeable enough to be able to make criticism. Now, let me make one caveat. There, we need to keep an eye on technologies as they come along. Now, we're dealing entirely with electromagnetic waves. I don't think there's, you know, some other aspect that was conceivable that will turn out to be a game changer. But I know the AT&amp;T has run some experiments down south of using electrical wires for the transmission of signals. Now, not through the wire itself, but through the waves around the wire. I don't fully understand. I'm not an EM guy, I'm a infrared guy. So maybe that would be one aspect. I don't know that you haven't thought about it and dismissed it, because it's too premature, but nevertheless. So my, you know, my answer is, I think we're doing what we should be doing. And, you know, Jason, over to you.
All right, thank you. So this has proven to be an incredibly important topic, far more so than when we even started this discussion at the beginning of the current county commission's term in 2019. I hear every day at this point from parents who are struggling with broadband access during the virtual learning that's going on. You know, in my own home, we have a college student who's doing engineering work remotely. I have a 10th grader and a 7th grader who are doing remote work as well in the Chelsea School District. I myself, at one point, had lived in a home with no internet service, so I understand the limitations that come along with that. And at this point in time, it's probably the number one thing that's concerning people here in the western part of the county. I was proud at the beginning of my term. One of the first things that we did that I really pushed for was creation of the Broadband Task Force, which is a collection of townships throughout the county that have come together to figure out how to get broadband access to everybody across this county of ours. We did a study that looked at the 15 rural townships and found that 64% of K-12 students in those rural townships didn't have broadband-level access, which you need for the type of schoolwork that is going on. What we are doing with that survey data that we collected earlier this year is trying to aggregate it together and put it into a way where we can apply for federal grant opportunities that are available through the Department of Agriculture to bring broadband expansion in. And then COVID-19 hit, and everybody realized the importance for telemedicine, education, for work from home, economic development impacts, and how important that broadband service really is. So in terms of going into the next term, whoever wins this election, broadband's going to be an incredibly important issue. It's going to be something I'm focusing a lot of time on, to bring broadband service into everybody throughout the township. This is not anything other than a public utility at this point. Everybody needs access to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. And we're going to stick with you for this last question. This is on the road commission. "The road commission has always been a hot topic of conversation with citizens having major concerns about its structure and place in county government. It is a commission hired by you, the county, but is independent and does not fall under the county jurisdiction. Our roads and the way we handle a myriad of issues connected to them are paramount in importance to the electorate. It has been suggested there might be a change in how we do business. Should there be more direct or different oversight? Should it become a separate department elected by the community? What suggestions do you have to implement changes so we can finally fix the damn roads?"
Yes, probably over the course of my first term on the commission, that's the number one topic, broadband and roads. You know, the questions that you just posed were questions that we came into office in the first term, the county commission as a whole, to deal with. And I think we took a very comprehensive view of road commissions' operations, and considered the question, should the road commission be part of county government? Should it remain as its own independent body? And after a lot of public testimony, discussion with local leaders, and comments from local officials, I supported expanding the road commission to five members. It had been three, where state statute allows five. I supported that to bring more representation from the general public into the road commission's discussions. It is the one thing that the county commission has control over at the road commission, is the who is on the road commission itself. We now have geographic balance throughout the county with the five road commissioners that we have. I think it is a more transparent body with the MOU that the county commission and the road commission signed together. They're giving reports to the county commission on the activities that they are doing. We have ongoing communication, which I think is really important, and it needs to continue. I'm going to point to the Miller-Wagner Roundabout Project that is going on, that hopefully is going to wrap up in a couple of weeks, is an example of the way that the road commission and the county are working better together. I had a chance to talk with the road commission about that project, and encouraged them to talk to residents before the project got going, before they got too deep into planning. And they went out and did that. They put signage up, they held public meetings to get input, and they worked through a lot of the issues beforehand. I know that the project is nearly complete. I think it's going to be quite successful. The impact of the community was really dealt with early on, and I think it's an example of how we can work together.
Good. Thank you. Thank you, Jason. Rod, your turn, please.
Roads, okay. My experience, of course, has been in the city, and back when I was on the council, roads were a continued problem. And we actually had the system where we have dedicated millages for some aspects of roads, but there's, you know, we use part of our general funds to maintain them. But even that wasn't adequate. We still, our roads are not where they should be. And I think it's because if you build a new park, everybody loves it, because they can go to the park. But when you're driving down the street and you don't hit a pothole, you know, you get no benefit for that. And that's sort of the situation that we're in. I think the action that the commission has taken to expand the board is a good step. I don't know that it's the final step. There's the question, of course, I think Jason alluded to this, is that are we worried about accountability to the voters, or are we interested in autonomy? At some level, we like to say, you know, for example, locally here, the Chelsea Area Fire Authority, you know, public safety authorities in general, is that we form these things out of people that basically aren't directly accountable to the voters, because they're appointed by their boards, but they're usually, you know, members of Board of Trustees or whatever. But that's, that leads to a, I'm not entirely comfortable with that. I would like voters to be able, if something occurs that is, gets really in their wheelhouse, something they're really concerned about, they ought to have the right to go into the voting booth and get rid of the people or persons that are responsible for doing that. So my tendency would be, it's not dogmatic about this, I think it perhaps depends on the specific situation, but let's put it back, let's give it to the voters and let the voters decide. Now, if that's the case, five individuals over Washtenaw County, that's probably not enough. You need to make a board.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Now, we're time for our closing statements. We'll begin with Mr. Anderson.
Let me take 30 seconds. Okay, let me talk about where, why am I running? So, don't get me wrong, I am serious about this race. I'm just not going to campaign. And I said that when I was asked to run by the county commission. I'm Republican on the executive committee. So there are reasons for that. But I strongly believe we are at a cusp, and we need to be able to speak to each other. Jason and I are, you know, we're, I think, we do this pretty well, but it's, in many cases... Jason and I are, you know, we're, I think, we do this pretty well, but it's, in many cases, Jonathan Haidt wrote The Righteous Mind, identified five or six moral foundations, and that is the principles we use to make decisions. And here's the issue. Now, Haidt is the man of the left, so I don't think this is biased, but I'm open to suggestion, is that libertarians and liberals or progressives simply do not recognize many of the moral underpinnings for the beliefs of conservatives. And my position is that, okay, I'm not asking you to take up my position, but first of all, understand that I do have a position that's different from yours. And number two, kind of why I'm holding that position. And that's why it's important for, maybe not me, because I'm not holding myself as the exemplar here, but somebody from the social conservative traditionalist camp needs to be on the county board because as far as I can see right now, it's 100% Democratic.
Thank you, sir. Jason?
Thank you, Peter. I'm going to touch on a few issues that I think are also really important to the county that we haven't talked about in the previous questions. I think it's important to note that the county commission, about a month and a half ago, approved going to zero carbon emissions from county operations by the year 2030. We've also taken steps to improve watershed protection and agriculture resources in the Soil Conservation District. Those are two things related to our environment that I think are really critical and important steps forward for county government. I worked to create a commission on aging. We are one of the few counties in the state that did not have a commission on aging. I think it's really important to take into account the viewpoints and the desires of people who are 60 and over across all of county government, whether it's roads or internet service or programs from community and economic development, and having that as part of our county government. You know, one thing that I'm quite proud of having achieved is maintaining the services under community mental health during the $10 million budget hole that we saw last year and keeping all the services there for people. And finally, one of the things that doesn't get a lot of attention, but I was quite proud of, was I brought a meeting of the county commission out to Sylvan Township. It was the first time in, as long as anybody could remember at the county, that a meeting of the county commission.
Thank you, gentlemen. This has been a very valuable session. I will now turn this over to Sally for closing statements.
The League thanks the candidates for participating in tonight's forum and to all those who contributed questions. All our candidate forums will be available for streaming on your computer or your smartphone. Go to our website, l w v n arbor.org, and look for a link to the programs. In addition, the forums can be viewed on Community Television Network. Please urge your friends and neighbors to watch these forums, too. For additional nonpartisan information on candidates and ballot issues, go to 411.org. The League's voter resource guide covering local, state, and federal candidates and current proposals that will be, ballot proposals that will appear on your ballot. As a reminder, all registered voters may cast an absentee ballot.